I need to order, uh, council meeting October 7th, 2013. Roll call please.
Joe.
Here.
Ralph.
Here.
Bill.
Here.
Kathy.
Um.
Kim.
Yes.
Mary Jane.
Here.
Does everyone have a chance to look at the minutes from last month and so I need a motion to accept? Seven minutes. Second. Roll call please.
Joe.
Yes.
Ralph.
Yes.
Bill.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Mary Jane.
Yes.
Does everyone have a chance to look at the awards and payroll timesheets and so I need a motion to accept please?
Someone?
Second. Roll call please.
Kim.
Yes.
Mary Jane.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
Bill.
Yes.
Ralph.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Mary Jane.
Yes.
I need a motion for the approval of the police fund monthly operating fund transfer.
I move the transfer to you. I'll second it.
Roll call please.
Joe.
Yes.
Ralph.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
Bill.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Mary Jane.
Yes.
I also need a motion forward to approve the interest transfer please.
Someone?
Second. Roll call please.
Joe.
Yes.
Bill.
Yes.
Ralph.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Mary Jane.
Yes.
Thank you. And that Susan, if you would please, for George.
Thank you very much. Hopefully some of the dust has settled in town by now and things are getting a little bit back to normal and the Apple Fest went well hopefully and the crews were out of town and out of everybody's way for the parade. We have given issued a final punch list to pro grade which is basically a list of some things that need to be, you know, paid attention to. I know there's some settling of the chop soil that they put in in a number of places. There's a couple other little issues here and there, so I'm going to give you a copy of that if you and Billy want to look it over. If there's anything we need to add, you can let us know. I know that they're waiting to come back until we've had a few rains, which I'm sure the rain over the weekend will help to kind of settle that top soil that's out there. The grass looks beautiful, but unfortunately, they didn't really compact the soil when they put it in, so there's a lot of areas that have subbed quite a bit. So they'll have to come back in and basically put some more top soil in and then replant the grass in those particular areas. So with that being said, what I do have for you this evening is a pay request from them for $281,846.88 and that basically entails all the parts of the original contract that they've done to date. It also includes all the work included with change order number one, which was the Shady Lane and the Lincoln Lane areas up there. There are some additional work items over and above the contract that they've provided to us, but I have not prepared a change order for any of those items as of yet until they give me an itemized list of where those locations are and exactly what they entail, because they gave me like 21 cubic yards extra of non-reinforced concrete pavement. So that's driveways somewhere. So we need to just kind of do some figuring out of where exactly these extra quantities are so that we can decide whether or not they're approvable or not. So when I come back in November, I will most likely have a change order for you to approve of those extra items that we agree with. There were some areas related to some extra milling that they did out here on Washington Street. There were a couple areas where we had some base failures that we had to repair on East Main Street before we paved. So there's some items like that that are part of the additional work that we will be reviewing and approving. So I will bring that to you in November along with probably a pay request from them, you know, claiming those items. So, but for this evening, I just have pay application number one, and so I guess we need a motion to approve that payment. That payment will include $41,000 from the county, which was your county CDBG money for East Main Street, along with approximately $184,000 from OPWC, which was the grant program that we got the majority of the money from, and then I think the village's share is somewhere around $55,000, so.
Okay. Great job. Looks great.
Okay.
I've had a lot of nice comments about it. I appreciate the fact that they got done the time of the Apple Fest, especially with the car show down there. I think the residents are happy with Lincoln and Shady Lanes and how they haven't had a new road in 40 years.
Yay!
Things are being happy there. I think pro grade did a good job, and so with that, I would ask council for a motion to the numbers. Pay out number?
$281,846.88. And again, that's not the final number, but it's only what you're going to approve this evening.
Is there a motion for pay please?
I make a motion for payout number one in the amount of $281,846.88.
Is there a second for second? Roll call please.
Ralph.
Yes.
Bill.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Mary Jane.
Yes.
Again, I gave the punch list to Rick. If anybody has any questions or concerns, please feel free to give us a call or let him know and we can add the things to the punch list. Once they do the work on the punch list, we will come back and do another inspection to make sure that they did that to our satisfaction. If there's any other items, it'll be called a back punch list, which is basically just an additional list of any items that the village would come up with, if Billy would see something, resident calls about something that they're not happy with or they're concerned about, then we can take a look at it. So, you know, even though the work's, you know, 95% done, you know, there's 5% of things out there that, you know, still needs some attention and, you know, those will be done before any final payment will be given, so. The other thing I wanted to give you this evening is I did get a letter from District 11, the Public Works Integrating Committee, stating that the West Cherry Street application did score above the funding line, and as of now, the application is totally complete. There's nothing else that we need to give to them, and they should make their final cut, I believe, on October the 17th. So after that, I don't see any concerns or high enough on the list that, you know, you're not going to fall off, so I think it's just a matter of we need to, you know, finish going through the process and then the money will be awarded next July 1st.
Great.
So I think we're in good shape with that. The other thing I'll just mention, just so you can begin to think ahead, is based on the schedule on that project, we have engineering starting in July of 2014 through November of 2014, bidding and awarding the job in approximately December of 2014, and then construction will take place in '15.
That's our next slated construction.
Yes, which would be West Cherry Street.
You're counting for next year.
No. No, well, no, next year there won't be any. Correct. With that being the case, you will need to budget $6,000 to $7,000 in 2014 out of your, I think, your $71,000 share, and then probably $64,000 to $65,000 of that in 2015. I just wanted to kind of give you those numbers, and if you need those to call me or whatever, we'll go to you. So I just kind of thought I'd give you that information, just kind of since we know this far in advance where we're at with that. And then the other thing, just because a lot of you are newer, not really Joe or Mary Jane, but maybe the rest of you, you know, as we go through these different grant programs, the key is, as you, as Rick and Joe and Mary Jane can tell you, is to always think ahead. With that being the case, the CDBG allocation program applications will be due in April again next year, which is the money that the county gives out, the $41,000 that you're using came from that program. After I've talked with you, they changed the program last year where they have the competitive set-asides. In the past, we've used the Neighborhood Revitalization Grant three different times. We've gotten $900,000 worth of grant money brought into new pairs through that program. They kind of took that program and they have two other little offshoots. One's the Neighborhood Revitalization, or the Downtown Revitalization, excuse me, and another one's called Critical Infrastructure, which is basically targeting a piece of infrastructure that serves the entire community, that maybe has some, you know, problems that could be critical to your community. An example would be like if you have a bunch of stormwater problems and you need a stormwater detention pond, or if you have a water.
Water pressure.
Water, wastewater, pressure. There's some other, there's some other things out there for that. Ohio Public Works Commission will work for bridges. There may also be some money we could get you through ODOT for bridges if you've got to take some of those on. I know I'm working with a township in Preble County that's kind of taking on some bridges because the county, if they're more than 10-foot span, they won't take them on anymore. They did get a call replaced through the CDBG program this past year that we put in. We did put a critical infrastructure application in for them this past year to basically replace some bridges on a township road, so that program's available for bridges if you have that situation. So I guess I just wanted to make you start thinking, because all those applications will be due to the county in April as well, and I know it sounds like a long way away, but it's not.
Is there a big match amount of money?
There's no match required. Each one of those grants is $300,000. There's no required match, but obviously, the more that you can match with it, the stronger your application is. If you can use other projects that you're doing, and a good example would be the Cherry Street project, you can use the Cherry Street project even though you're going to do a bridge. You know, even though you're not really doing anything related to Cherry Street, you can still use that as a match, and because you'll have your letter, most likely in March, that says, "Congratulations, you're funded," you would have the ammunition to use that as match with a critical infrastructure or a Neighborhood Revitalization project.
So it sounds like we've been discussing for years now, five or six years, you know, going up the hill off the cherry for water and sewer for those folks above the water wells where we got our wells contaminated last time with the big flood. So that sounded like that would be inappropriate, seeing how that concerns everyone in town if our wells are flooded again from, from the septic systems above the well. That would qualify for that. That'd be like a great opportunity for that.
I could think that would be a critical infrastructure type application, yes.
That would be, I mean, we've wanted to do that for a long time because we don't want to run the risk of our wells being contaminated again and have to drill the wells, so that's something that might fit this very well.
Well, we could probably go back and use some of the old information, which I have, from before we put the new wells in and how you were, basically, you were given a surface water designation because you were getting surface water infiltration into your wells, and they changed your designation to surface water instead of groundwater. So, I mean, I've still got all that information that we can go back and prove that it happened once, and those people are still up there, and, you know, that hasn't changed. You know, we have changed the location of the wells themselves, but, you know, that doesn't totally do away with where the root of the problem came from, so. I guess I'm just trying to get you to start thinking about things and, you know, the grant world and what's happened on Washington Street, you know, been a 10-year in-process type of thing, as even Neil can tell you and Kevin can tell you from when he was on council. You know, it's been something that, you know, didn't just start yesterday. It's, you know, it's been about planning and thinking ahead, and I guess I just want to be able to help you continue to do that.
I'd like to get started on the bridges as soon as we can before the other communities get, you know, get done on it, so we don't get knocked down on.
And something I can get, as I can get from Preble County, they, they will give me all of their bridge inventory information and they will go inventory the bridges on your behalf. So that's something that I have been using the engineer's office for, because they do it basically for you for free, and then I can use those inventory reports with grant applications to show the, you know, the level of the bridge and, you know, whatever the ratings are related to that, so that is something we can utilize. And they have been working very well with us on that. I'm sorry.
If I may, Mary Jane alluded to the fact about the bridges. We have two of them that I'm kind of worried about myself.
Okay.
And listen to you, and we swap around and swap some projects for bridges.
Yeah, I mean, there's, I don't know that we're swapping projects, but that could become a project, yes.
Sneak them in, whatever you want to call it. Depending on the money.
Yeah, they would become one of the, one of the things that you want to try to, you know, go after money to repair, yes.
Yes. Just for mechanics to, uh, technical.
Okay, you're welcome. And then I guess just the other thing would be, obviously, we don't have anything in the Ohio Public Works Commission pipeline as of now, so that's another option for funding that you probably need to think about come, you know, April, May, June. The applications are usually due the end of July, 1st of August, so that's, you know, something else that we probably need to think about. You know, I know we've talked about, you know, going east on Cherry Street. Remember with that particular program, usually average daily traffic, average daily traffic counts are important, and that's why we've kind of, I guess, targeted Washington Street, Cherry Street, because we can use the traffic counts because they're state routes. So that's kind of one of those things that, in that particular grant, is important, because it's a scoring criteria, so. Okay? Anything else? That's all I have. I just kind of wanted to just briefly talk to you about that a little bit.
Can you take anybody else? Susan, thank you very much.
Okay, you're very welcome.
For all your help in this village over the years.
No problem.
It's done without you. Certainly appreciated.
Well, I appreciate you putting your faith in me and letting me help you, so thank you.
And I'm sure you have another meeting or something.
Yes, I do.
Bill, great, thank you.
I can get bored tonight, but I'm not.
While we're on the streets, there was, during the work being taking place, to let council know, I, I, we had a decision that had to be made on Monday morning. The, the striping machine was coming to, in town for the, and originally, when they did Washington Street, it was zigzagged down through there when they tore the pavement up, and I addressed Ralph and Joe about this, only to find that day, but the decision had to be made quickly. And Bob from Wagner suggested us that we build a six-foot path down through there so it would look a lot neater and be, instead of being in and out, in and out, in and out, and that decision had to be made that morning, and so I did not have time to ask for a special council meeting. I'll let you know I did pull the trigger on that. I told them to go ahead with it, and I don't know the exact number, but we're somewhere around $10,000 to $12,000, I think it was, Susan.
Yeah, we're gonna, I think they're gonna.
There's a lot, I knew there's.
They're gonna build it at a lower rate.
Yeah, at a lower rate, just to let council know that I did pull the trigger without a special meeting, but it's something that had to be made that morning. We couldn't wait. They were leaving in the afternoon with the machine, so we had pulled the trigger on it. And I think it worked out best. It looks great down through there, the way they did it, a nice straight line and everything, so I think it was well worth it, so.
Part of the problem had to do with the fact that you had some base problems down in there, and when they tried to saw cut that, the pavement just fell apart, and you came with that jaggedness, and if we even went back and tried to saw cut it again, it wasn't going to get any better, and it was going to be difficult to try to wedge it back in and then have this jagged line that you're going to have to be able to go in and crack through, so it's been between now and the time that ODOT will be here to actually know where to pave that, so that was kind of the problem. That was one of the base problems.
Next one in is Rebecca. You got something for council to announce?
No, I've been, the tenant I just took care of, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Maran, can you add something?
Yeah. Yeah, it's John Maran. I got a problem with the water meter in front of my house. It's broken and it won't stay fastened, and when you drive over it, it flips over. Is there any chance that anybody could look at that and fix it? I've had the water company down there a dozen times tightening it. It's broken. The casing around it is broken.
We'll have the, we'll have the water department take a look at that.
All right.
Thank you. Committee reports. You standing for the chief tonight, or?
Yes, sir, we do.
Okay. Billy?
Streets, just the obvious. It's took place. I think, like I say, we've had a lot of compliments on the streets. I think it looks really great down through there. I think it's worked out real well for everyone. I don't have to talk to anyone that was displeased with it, so I think pro grade did a very good job.
I have, uh, I had a call from a person that said that the alley off a cherry going to Methodist Church has potholes, and they just wanted to see if we couldn't get that done. I don't, and I was told that nothing's been done with the alley between Pearl and Ran Avenue. It had big potholes in it. Joe requested that to be looked at, and the yellow curb hasn't been painted yet down there across from your place.
Well, yeah, we'll take a look into that. The alleys, we're pretty busy trying to get the project done before Apple Fest, so our attention is on that. We have all the grindings from the street grindings down here that's piled up back here to back. Billy was calling today for prices on a bobcat and a small milling machine. I think what we're going to try and do, if we can, if the price is not too high, we want to go down through the alleys and take a small milling machine and knock the crown off, so you don't have the crown and the hump. And at the point we get that done, then we'll take the grindings that we have off. That was the reasoning for taking the grindings, saving the grindings from the street project was to spread them into the alley and roll them off. So unfortunately, there's a lot going on right now with the leaves starting, so it's really tied up with the leaves, but we're going to try and get these grindings used before winter sets in so they don't sit back and get all plumped up, so it's being addressed as quickly as we can get it addressed. Lights?
I'll let somebody get their voice calling.
Okay.
There is something, lights, Kim, I noticed one out down by the old, on Tool Place, down by one that's tool.
Oh, okay.
It was out the other evening when I went down that way, but I don't know.
Back in there or on Cherry Street?
On Cherry Street, right there where the old railroad track and then it's on that tool.
Can I get that number off the pole, right?
Yeah, I just get it off the pole. It may be one of those, it's a part timer. I went into that before while I was on lights.
Oh, okay.
Haven't been down there in the last couple nights since it came back on, but I did them this Saturday if you didn't.
Okay.
Sanitation?
I don't have any time.
Okay. I'm sorry, finance?
We have operations.
Yeah, a little bit, okay. Whatever on finance, last month, there was some discussion, Kathy, there was some discussion about tying into the chamber website, I believe. As council had time to think about that and given any thought whether they want to pursue this or not, I'm going to refresh everyone's memory here. Looked into hooking with the chamber website. The website lists email address for council, board of public affairs members. The website could also include the monthly meetings, minutes, calendars with important dates and rosters. The cost of one-time setup is $500, an annual $30 dominant name fee, and then $30 a month. Does council have a chance to give this any thought? Do they have any open discussion about this as to what they would like to do or not do or?
I mean, this would actually need to build its own website, which we don't, I think the water department has, has one, but I'm not sure. And it could be tied, they could tie it to the chamber through, and maybe we could just go to ours, but it would be our own. And I was just, I just checked on it to see what it would be. I don't think any of us had much of an idea.
And they would have to keep it and all that stuff.
Well, um, okay, it would be what it.
Yeah, I'm watching the business.
James would deal with it, but should we get the information to him and he would take care of it.
Colin, the president of the chamber is, what's his title? He works, he's a programmer, computer programmer, and he's been doing all that.
So he would be the one that updating it?
I'm hoping he would.
From the information that we would instruct James to give to him or on a regular basis, he would see it as updated, yes.
Is that all part of the cost too?
And that's part of the, I mean, it's a $30 a month fee, that's a maintenance fee, and that's what that's for.
$30 a month to maintain and keep that information about this.
We'd have to get it to him. He's not going to come looking for it. I have no, I'm not recommending it or not recommending it. I just want council to be aware of the facts of having their own.
Do we want any further discussion on this, or would you like time to consider it? Or?
Can we afford it?
Good question.
I mean, that's cheap to me, but I don't know, that $500.
I totally agree. That's what it is. It would need to be brought up for discussion.
It's a $500 one time, but you just to actually get the things that I said. Then the others.
Yeah, but then we have the money.
No, I don't know. I mean, it depends. I'm sure there's money there for it if we're interested.
If you can.
You know, how interested are you? If I can, dollars worth or not, very much.
And what, what all are you wanting to put on there? A lot of them have their own, this and everything on it. I don't know.
I think you would face to be on your, very quickly.
I've seen now that the loans for the village, I sent you all the information there, and you wouldn't run it, so.
That might be a good informational tool for everyone.
Yeah.
But we'll, I think you ought to have your own, set up your own. Well, that's.
It is our own.
It is our own. It could also be linked to the chamber.
I wouldn't want to make it to the chamber, so.
I don't think we could afford it if we don't.
Well, no, I think we could. I think that we just would like to be linked to that and linked to the, you know, if there's something that they have at the park, you know, so if they're looking at one, they will maybe come over the other, or if they're looking at us, maybe they'll go and look at some of the other things the village has to offer besides just the village government.
Did they have anything, does the chamber have anything of us on theirs?
I think they have a list of who the council members are and.
Just those type of.
There is one under, that gives our, shows our meeting.
And that's one that Jeff Golds has.
That's Jeff Golds.
Yeah, she does that, but I didn't know if we wanted to put more things on there. I didn't know if we wanted to be able to.
This one, you would be in charge of what information went out there. In other words, there could be a lot of BS in there or whatever. It would be controlled and it would be factual without, without all some of the other stuff that floats around, and it's not an opinion by any one person, it's the facts. So it's just, it was something discussed last week.
Uh, next one in is Rebecca. You got something for Council on council?
No, I've been, the tenant actually took care of it, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Moran, can you add something?
Yeah. Yeah, it's John Moran. I got a problem with the water meter in front of my house. It's broken and it won't stay fastened and when you drive over it, it flips over. Is there any chance that anybody could look at that and fix it? I've had the water company down there a dozen times tightening it. It's broken. The casing around it is broken.
We'll have the, we'll have the Water Department take a look at that.
All right.
Thank you. Committee reports, you standing for the chief tonight or?
Yes, sir, we do.
Okay. Billy?
Streets, just the obvious, it's took place. I think, like I say, we've had a lot of compliments on the streets. I think it looks really great down through there. I think it's worked out real well for everyone. I don't have to talk to anyone that was displeased with it, so I think pro grade did a very good job.
I have, uh, I had a call from a person that said that the alley off of Cherry going to Methodist Church has potholes and they just wanted to see if we couldn't get that done. I don't, and I was told that nothing's been done with the alley between Pearl and Ran Avenue. It had big potholes in it. Joe requested that to be looked at and the yellow curb hasn't been painted yet down there across from your place.
Well, yeah, we'll take a look into that. But the alleys, we're pretty busy trying to get the project done before Apple Fest, so our attention is on that. We have all the grindings from the street grindings down here that's piled up back here to back. Billy was calling today for prices on a bobcat and a small milling machine. I think what we're gonna try and do is we can, if the price is not too high, we wanna go down to the alleys and take a small milling machine and knock the crown off, so you don't have the crown and the hump. And at the point we get that done, then we'll take the grindings that we have off. That's the reasoning for taking the grindings, saving the grindings from the street project was to spread them into the alley and roll them off. So unfortunately, there's a lot going on right now with the leaves starting, so he's really tied up with the leaves, but we're gonna try and get these grindings used before winter sets in, so they don't sit back and get all pumped up. So it's being addressed as quickly as we can get it addressed.
Uh, lights?
I'll let somebody get their lights calling.
Okay.
There's something, I can't notice one out down by the old, on Tool Place Center.
Where?
Down by one that's Tool.
Oh, okay.
It was out the other evening when I went down that way, but I don't know.
Back in there or on Cherry Street?
On Cherry Street, right there where the old railroad track and then it's on that tool.
Can I get that number off the pole, right?
Yeah, just get it off the pole. It may be one of those, it's a part timer, I went into that before while I was on lights.
Oh, okay.
Haven't been down there in the last couple nights since it came back on, but I did them this time if you didn't.
Okay.
Sanitation?
I don't have any time.
Okay. I'm sorry, finance?
We have appropriations.
Yeah, a little minutes, okay.
Uh, whatever on finance, uh, last month there was some discussion, Kathy, uh, there was some discussion about tying into the Chamber website, I believe. Uh, as council had time to think about that and giving any thought whether they wanna pursue this or not, I'm gonna refresh everyone's memory here. Uh, looked into hooking with the Chamber website. The website lists email address for council, board of public affairs members. The website could also include the monthly meetings, minutes, calendars with important dates and rosters. The cost of one-time setup is $500, an annual $30 dominant name fee, and then $30 a month. Does council have a chance to give this any thought? Do they, any open discussion about this as to what they would like to do or not do or?
I mean, this would actually need to build its own website. Should we tell them? I think the Water Department has, has one, but I'm not sure. And it could be tied, they could tie it to the Chamber throughout, and maybe we could just go to ours, but it would be our own. I, and I was ju, I just checked on it to see what it would be. I don't think any of us had much of an idea.
And they just want to keep it and all that stuff.
Well, um, okay, it would be what it would be.
Yeah, I'm watching the business.
Honestly, you know, Jamie would deal with it, but should we get the information to him and he would take care of it.
Colin, the president of the Chamber is, what, what's his title? He works, he's a programmer, computer programmer, and he's been doing all that.
So he would be the one updating it?
I'm hoping he would.
From the information that we would instruct Jamie to give to him or on a regular basis, he would see it as updated, yes.
Is that all part of the cost too?
And that's part of the, I mean, it's a $30 a month fee, that's a maintenance fee and that's what that's for.
$30 a month to maintain and keep that information up to date.
We'd have to get it to him, he's not gonna come looking for it. I have no, I'm not recommending or not recommending, you know, I just want council to be aware of the facts of having their own.
Do we warrant any further discussion on this or would you like time to consider it?
Can we afford it?
Good question.
I mean, that's cheap for me, but I don't know, that $500.
I totally agree, that's, but it'd need to be brought up for discussion tonight.
It's a $500 one-time, but you just to actually get the things set up. Then the others.
Yeah, but then we have the money.
No, I don't know. I mean, it depends, I'm sure there's money there for it if we're interested.
If you can.
You know, how interested are you? If I can, dollars worth or not, very much.
And what, what all are you wanting to put on there? A lot of them have their own, this and everything on it, I don't know.
I think you would face to be on your end.
I've seen now that the loans for the village, I sent you all the information there. It wouldn't run there, so.
That might be a good informational tool for everyone.
Yeah.
But we'll, I think you ought to have your own, set up your own. Well, that's.
It is our own.
It is our own, it could also be linked to the Chamber.
I wouldn't wanna make it to the Chamber, so.
I don't think we could afford it if we don't.
Well, no, I think we could. I think that we just would like to be linked to that and linked to the, you know, if there's something that they have at the park. You know, so if they're looking at one, they, they will maybe come over the other, or if they're looking at us, maybe they'll go and look at some of the other things the village has to offer besides just our, the village governor.
Did they have anything, did the Chamber have anything of us on theirs?
Uh, I think they have a list of who the council members are and.
Just those type of.
There is one under, that gives our, shows our meeting.
And that's one that Jeff Golds has.
That's Jeff Golds.
Yeah, she does that, but I didn't know if we wanted to put more things on there. I didn't know if we wanted to be able to.
This one you would be in charge of what information went out there. In other words, there couldn't be a lot of BS in there or whatever, it would be controlled and it would be factual without, without a lot of some of the other stuff that floats around and it's not an opinion by any one person, it's the facts. So it's just, it was something discussed last week or last month.
Yeah, I'd like to wait for the first of the year and see what we're at. That's why I had choice.
Well, maybe it's a thing we can look at one day.
Yeah.
Keep in mind, think about it.
It was just for discussion and so do we need to table that formally, Neil? So let's, I need a motion to table that for a later date, please.
I'll make a motion to table that discussion about the internet service.
Second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Joe?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Uh, while we're on that, we might as well address this other one. Last month, we also, we talked about the early warning siren. Uh, we talked about asking the community for donations. I think the word was a bit better if we did pledges for people. That way you don't take the money and if you don't raise enough, you don't have, you know, go back and find out who it was. Is this, is there any further thought on this from council?
I talked to some of the members of the fire district and they had a grant program that may be available out there through the fire system that may help us out. I'm gonna address that at the next meeting of the Fire Department, have a meeting tonight, get with a member and see what information they has. They canned and did it under a grant program and supposedly there may be some money for us too.
That'd be good.
We did that before, that's what we did before and then they took it away from us.
Oh, really?
Absolutely.
Yeah, we had it at one time and they took it.
They gave it to Xenia and took it away, took it away from us and gave it to Xenia.
Well, maybe we can read it again or something.
That, that program falls in only when the, when the state breaks around at the time, say they're funding signs at the time, or they're funding bridges at the time, and you have to wait till that comes into effect.
So when it gets slightly wet.
So when it comes around.
Okay.
Then, then they go for that.
So do you feel like I should pursue it any further or?
Oh, I think that's.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Okay.
Is, comments from the audience on the early warning siren?
I know somebody that might have to, Bob Schein, he would've done it before, but he had a conflict with the police department, so he kept his mouth shut.
Sorry again, sir, what was that?
I said Bob Schein was thinking about contributing towards that alarm, but he got into a conflict with the police department, so he decided not to do it.
Well, that's Mr. Schein's choice. We're, we're not here for people, we're looking at this from.
Well, I was, I would suggest you talk to him.
He might help you.
Yeah.
Well, that's fine, thank you. Uh, like I say, this is, this is something that could save us all, so.
I think that's the place where we're ready to take pledges and everything. We'll be able to, we'll make sure everybody knows that.
All right, so we'll table that for, and Ralph, if you would, please, keep continuing with the, with the Fire Department on that, so that you come up with, and there, there again, we'll table this to a later date, by a motion, please.
I'm gonna move this discussion to be tabled.
Second?
Roll call, please.
Ralph?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Mary Jane?
Yes.
Okay, planning, I know nothing from planning. BPA, Kevin? Unfortunately, I do have a couple. Uh, we just had the backhoe work on over about the last two months and we finally have it fixed, I guess. But in the past, the BPA and the councils always shared the cost of repair, and so I'm here to see if council would come up with $969.51, which would be half of the overall cost of the backhoe. I'll make a motion to pay the $969.51.
I'll make a motion to pay the $969.51 to pay for our share of the backhoe repair expenses.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mary Jane?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Anything else, Neil?
Wanted to see about some of the asphalt grindings?
Uh huh.
Can you use those at the water treatment plant?
Absolutely.
Okay. So, can Billy do that or?
Yes.
Okay. I'll just get with him.
Yeah, just get with him, he can handle all of it and everything, so. Keep in mind, lead you coming quickly, so. You know, he might be hard to get a hold of here. He's supposed to, he's, uh, he's making some, this week he's working on the new dump truck to, for the box, the leak box to fit it properly. He's making some adjustments and prepavels and stuff for that, but yes, we'll do that, just get with him and be happy to do that.
Rick, can I ask you something?
Yes, Neil.
A little while ago, when you brought up about where you, emergency situation where you had to have the company do that grinding?
Yes.
And you used money to go ahead and do that without the council approval? You need to bring that up and have a motion on that and have council approve that, even though you went ahead and did that.
Okay, thank you, Neil. Uh, even though I don't have the exact number.
You got your rough number on that, don't you?
Yeah, originally.
I'd say 914,000 or whatever.
Well, I don't, it's, we don't know for sure, we're, we're supposed to get, yeah, okay, thanks, Neil, you're right.
That does have to be done.
Got you, thank you. That's why you need to be up here. All right, back to that, we'll back up. So, make remember of it up, I did meet with Joe and Ralph, that's the two available that day, I didn't want, anyone to think I was making this solely on, on my judgment, but it had to be made that morning, so in that regards, I'll need a motion for the extra money spent on the project of $12,000 for the, for the milling of Washington Street.
I'll make a motion that council approve the emergency authorization of $12,000 to do the milling on Washington Street.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ralph?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Mary Jane?
Yes.
Yeah, I think it's gonna be fine. Actually, I think it's all set down, we'll leave down around the nine number, but like she said, we don't, so they get the final bill and all that, we'll negotiate, we know exactly where it's at, it's close. Also, a couple of things here before I forget, I have a thank you here from Bonnie Hall, thanking the police department, the street department, and the water department for all our help with this. Also, to let you know, since we purchased the Gator, it's been five months, in five months, we, we have used $107.80 of fuel compared to over $200 a month, so $1,000, basically we've saved $900 in five months in fuel. Well worth it. We now have the final reading of the Chronic Nuisance Premises and Property Ordinance Number 2013-03. An ordinance prohibiting chronic nuisance of premises and properties for the Village of New Paris, Preble County, Ohio, being ordained and enacted by the Village of New Paris and Preble County, Ohio Council, and is hereby ordained and enacted by the authority as of same as called, entitled only. Is there any further discussion on this ordinance? If not, this is the third reading and we will be asking for a motion to accept.
I make a motion that we accept this chronic nuisance premises and properties ordinance 2013-03.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Joe?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Okay, Resolution Number 2013-13. Village of New Paris request amendment of the 2013 certification of estimated resources. What this is, Jamie and the Finance Committee got together to move some funds around, Rick, and we need to, motion to, we need to approve this, so she would get it to, what's her name?
Mandy.
Thank you, Mandy, down to courthouse. I'll need a motion for Resolution 2013-13, please.
Your hand.
I'll make a motion for 2013-13 Resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Joe?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Mary Jane?
Yes.
I also need a motion to revoke the three reading rule and pass this as an emergency, please.
I make a motion that we waive the three reading rule and make this an emergency.
Second. Roll call, please.
Mary Jane?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
There again, I'll need a motion to revoke the three reading rule and pass this as an emergency, please.
I summon you.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Joe?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
There again, I'll need a motion to revoke the three reading rule and pass this as an emergency, please.
I summon you.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Joe?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Mary Jane?
Yes.
Okay, last month, we had the Methodist Church, we come to council from the Planning Commission about the closing, vacating the alley between the Methodist Church and the property they own, because they wanna tear that house down and, and move the, move the interest down and close the alley there on that portion of it. We had discussion about whether it was a resolution or an ordinance. It turned out to be an ordinance. I did find an ordinance of 2006-03 that we used on the Cherry Street alley closing. So having sat down, I'm gonna read this ordinance tonight, so the church can proceed with this if council so approves. Ordinance Number 2013-04. An ordinance vacating a partial alleyway between 211 East Main Street and 301 East Main Street, New Paris, Ohio. Whereas, the Planning Commission of the Village of New Paris, Ohio, Preble County, Ohio, has heard and approved a request from St. Paul's United Methodist Church, New Paris, Ohio, to partially vacate the alleyway running north and south between Lot 65 and Lot 66, being 211 East Main Street and 301 East Main Street, to the point where this alleyway meets an existing alleyway running east and west from South Spring Street to South Washington Street, and whereas both 211 and 301 East Main Streets are property of St. Paul United Methodist Church, New Paris, Ohio, and this action will cause no loss of access to other property owners, being therefore obtained by the council of the Village of New Paris, Preble County, Ohio, that this alleyway running north and south between Lot 65 and 66 be vacated as it mortars Lot 65 and 66, and no longer shall be an open alleyway in the Village of New Paris, Ohio. And I will need a motion to accept ordinance 2013-04 if council so sees fit.
Motion to accept ordinance 2013-04.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Joe?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Mary Jane?
Yes.
Uh, old business, okay?
Um, I'd like to have council's suggestions on, back in 2006, this is about burial payments. The state used to pay for people that didn't have any money for burial services, and we need to update ours, I feel, to try to recoup some of the money back if we ever have to pay any of this. We have had one or two people that has had, we've had to pay for their burials. Uh, but I'd like to get with Kathy and go over this to try to work out some kind of a, a payment such as, right now, if a person dies and we have to pay for it, usually, well, it hasn't happened yet, but the township usually has what they call a pallbearer's grave, and they have always donated the, the property. Uh, the person has to be cremated, that's, and if we do have an ordinance and, or a resolution and it's 2006-11, um, we pay up to $750 of that. There's been, um, and we don't, we usually, we didn't let, let the people, I keep saying letting, there's only been two people that I know of that we've had to pay for. Uh, this is something the state passed down to us, that we have to do and it's in your RC laws, but you have our own resolution. Um, but to try to get some of our $750 back, um, the people, we have given the ashes to the people, the family if they want them. Um, and a way to, I've been working with the funeral, you know, trying to work this out, but, um, one of the ways that we might be able to get our mon, some of our money back, if not all of it, if the people want the ashes, they're gonna have to come up with the $750. Otherwise, we take the ashes and hopefully the, the township will take care of my burying them. We also have a $25 expense as a headstone or a marker, which is, might be a piece of cement with a name or a date on it, but I want council's feelings on this. Do you want to leave it as it is, or would you like to try to get some of the money back? I don't know, or how many, I don't know how many people's gonna die all at one time and that's could rack up a lot of bucks.
That's gonna be on the grid, though.
Yeah. So I, I want your suggestions on changing this resolution, trying to get some of our money back or?
Personally, I don't think it's worth it. I mean, I think it's, where are we gonna store the ashes until they come up with the money?
Well, I'm in your pocket.
What if something happens to you, it just seems like chances for mishaps to happen when.
Well, could they say it's happening?
Doesn't happen very often in Woods, Tampa.
A lawsuit, maybe?
Tampa.
A lawsuit?
Pay the $750 and do what we're required to do.
I don't think, no, apparently not, because when Mary Jane spoke to the local funeral director, he said, this is how other places, they have their money. They, you know, they hold hostage, and that's just kinda what it sounds like. Although, you know, in, in larger places, this can happen every week. It could be something that's of, of an expense, like, you know, here it hasn't been that way. But it could be, well, you just don't know. But, um, this is how other places do it. If they will, the township, the village, the city, whatever, is responsible for the cremation, and if you want to cremate, then you pay the cost of the cremation. If you don't, they're in turn at the cemetery and, and as Mary Jane said.
Usually, we haven't had that happen yet, have we, Rick? We haven't had that happen. Usually, the township has a pallbearer's grave.
We've had, we have several now.
Yeah.
With that resolution two, three years ago, excuse me, that any indigenous heroes would be up there next to them.
Yeah, well, that's where it asked me, yeah. That's what our resolution states.
But we.
I mean, we just, we just want some direction. If, if we're happy with it the way it is, and there haven't been that many, that's no guarantee, there won't be, as, as Mary Jane says, but if we can leave it the way it is, right now it's a $750 cost to the village when that happens, and.
It's just being $750.
Rick, has the township ever tried to recruit any of that from individuals by storing without burial or whatever?
Yeah. Foundation down on forty was looking for the bed for a while. They started hitting us and, of course, there's people, it's metal out there and nobody wants to claim, so then Bob Barnes and a few other people got together, they make them take so much out of their check each month for that purpose and holding it back.
Up to a certain amount.
Yes.
But they're holding it on the, on the patients.
So they are paying their burial for the cemetery, aren't they? So they are paying their burial for the cemetery, aren't they?
They changed the visual patient.
Yes, yes.
But since they started doing that, we have not taken their money.
Well, we can, just a suggestion, if, if you feel like that we need to recoup some of our monies, it doesn't have to be the whole amount. You can have a certain amount or what, but. Right now, if we're in charge of the ashes and refuse to give it, we have to have, without them paying for the cost of cremation, then we, we need some of that. Yeah, we have to have them writing.
Now, let me comment.
Sure.
Be very careful about what you do, you'll be setting precedent for.
I know, that's why I'm trying to take care of it now.
We accept them partial payments and burdens, actually, we're not. They pay upfront, but they don't go and write, write, schmuck, sticky.
Yeah. Bob said that there was a situation in one of the villages that the family demanded the ashes for memorial service, which I can understand that. But there had been a resolution written up to where if that's what you want, you have to pay for the cremation. And the people didn't have the money, but they went out and got donations and came up with the money. I would hate for anybody to go through that, but if we want part, and you don't have to do the whole seven hundred and fifty. You can, or you can, or you could do part of it.
So what you're saying is without so much trouble, we could come up with an ordinance where if somebody wanted to take possession of the ashes, they would have to pay five hundred dollars?
Or whatever. I think you would need to have a time limit on that.
Yeah.
You're paying around four, five years. Because if something happened, then you would need.
Well. Go ahead, Ralph, anything you can say on this?
Bill, I, I'm a little concerned about the responsibility of ashes and where, and where you, where you take care of these at in the meantime, where you waiting for that? I, I mean, I don't think it's something, yes, as we're thinking about off the cuff here, we're kind of off the cuff here tonight. There's gotta be, I mean, if, if you ever go down this road, if you go down this road, there's some parameters here that's gonna have to be typed up pretty, pretty, pretty. I mean, you could, I mean, there's have to be timelines, I mean, you have this, well, I mean, you can't, I mean, there's a lot more here.
Everybody's treating the same.
I think there's a whole lot more here and I think also that we would have to seek legal advice from our solicitor in this matter. I think there's a lot of parameters here that, that's gotta be thought about, so.
You can always change it or when we find out all the information or whatever. I just wanted to bring it up because I don't know how to prove the people have the money.
Well, I don't.
And I think the funeral takes care of that, I'm not sure, but I just don't want to be stuck with the whole bunch of.
What happens to the ashes right now when we pay the seven fifty?
They can have them or they go.
What, the, the family?
The family.
So it's already been given to the family now?
It is now.
Yeah. Do you see a problem, a problem, and I thought they were going somewhere?
No, 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 if they, they take the ashes.
Another community that does have an ordinance, can they?
They do, I'm not sure. Bob told me about it and he didn't mention which village it was.
Well, let's, this is for future thought, let's give this some thought. This is a pretty, pretty tough grounds here that we're thinking.
I know where money was, is, is tight and I don't want to get stuck with a whole bunch of costs.
And I understand, but I, this is, I think it's gonna require a little thought.
Right.
Down this path, so thank you for bringing it up, Mary Jane, council, please be thinking about this. This is gonna come up again, so please give this some thought. Uh, new business?
Can we move back to our resolution for, did we make a, an emergency out of the alley?
Oh, we did not.
No.
We did not on the alley. I didn't know that it has to be, I mean.
I don't know if they're ready to do it right now or if they're gonna wait till spring.
I had no idea, so I didn't, I didn't feel like it.
I, I only had the question.
That is not holding up, Bill, from doing anything they want to do, so I see no reason to pass that as.
That's fine.
I mean, they can tear the house down without the alley. I mean, they're gonna move the driveway down and all that anyway. I don't see where that's an issue. But thank you for bringing that. Uh, new business? Anyone from the audience have anything else, anyone who'd like to speak up? Yes. Yes.
Yes, former mayor of New Parish and a shady lane resident. I want to thank Mayor, family in this council for finishing out the projects that we started. The town really looks good and I had a lot coming with from people in upper government that have come through here, you know, for our festival and so forth, and have really said, man, you guys got a nice looking town. And it is looking nice. So I want to thank you all on that. And I hope that you would continue to strive, to try to finish out the, the rest of the program that we put in place back in Two Thousand, Two Thousand One, which was a fifteen-year program to see that all these streets and things were taken care of. You're pretty well coming to the end of that list, so now it's up to you all to continue it out and finish it. And I just want to thank you all very much.
Thank you, Neil, and thank you for, for leading us down the path all this time. If nothing else, next meeting will be November fourth at seven o'clock. If there's nothing else, I need a motion for a term, please.
Someone?
Second.
I'll second.
All favor, say aye.
I.
Thank you.